Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday evening, March 10th, 2020 Selectmen's meeting. We want to wish first and foremost Chairman Lamarche for hoping that he gets better soon. And in addition to that, we'd like to start with a moment of silence for Dorothy Ireland. Please take a moment to remember Oxford resident Dorothy E. Ireland. Mrs. Ireland served on the Cable Advisory Committee and the Council on Aging. She also served as an election worker for 14 years. And additionally, she was a longtime Oxford Lassie League and Little League coach and a leader for the Cub Scout Pack and Boy Scout troop. We wish their family our deepest condolences. Okay, this evening, we are going to start off by naming this Girl Scout Week as a proclamation from the Town of Oxford. Would anyone like to come up and sit at the table? Excellent. Would anyone like to tell us what troop you guys are from? So you guys are from Troop 661?
We're missing the four.
You're missing 64661?
We're all from different troops, actually.
Oh, excellent.
We have one, I'm Deb Dwyer now, by the way. Hi, Deb. And we have one from almost every level here this evening except. So we have Daisy. You want to introduce yourself?
This is Ricky.
Hi, Ricky. It's 5104, it's our first year. It's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for coming this evening.
And then we have a Brownie level. Very good.
And we're actually a mixed troop because these are little brothers. But we're on Brownie level and Junior level, 264661.
Excellent in their name.
Grace, Grace and Harper.
Grace and Harper. Thank you so much for coming this evening and representing your troop. Thank you. And we have one more.
Yep, my daughter Alexandra from 30517. And she's been in Girl Scouts since she was a Daisy. This is her eighth year.
How nice.
She's a cadet. And then there's another level senior, and we couldn't have anyone from senior troop come tonight, unfortunately.
That's okay, that's okay. Well, thank you all for coming. We very much appreciate it. I do have a proclamation I need to read into the record. It's going to take me a minute, but if you don't mind, okay? So on Town of Oxford Proclamation, Girl Scout Week, March 12th, 1912, is the date of the first meeting of the Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Low in Savannah, Georgia with only 18 members. And whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting builds girls of courage, confidence, and strong character to make the world a better place. And whereas Girl scouting also develops strong values, social conscience, and conviction about their own potentials and self-worth. And whereas participation in Girl scouting teaches our children to understand, appreciate, and respect the cultural diversity of people in their community and throughout the world. And whereas through its membership in the World Association of Girl Guides and Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts of the USA is part of a worldwide family of 10 million girls and adults in 146 countries. And more than 50 million women in America today enjoy Girl Scouts during their childhood. And that number keeps on growing as Girl Scouts of the USA continues to inspire, challenge, and empower girls everywhere. And whereas the residents of the Town of Oxford appreciate the benefits and contributions made by you Girl Scouts of our community, and we wish to recognize the Girl Scouts of our community during their celebration of Girl Scout Week. That we, the selected of the Town of Oxford, do hereby proclaim the week of March 8th through March 14th, 2020, as Girl Scout Week. And it is signed by all of us and the Town Manager as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board members, anyone like to say anything?
I made it up to cadet, so I applaud you because I know it's a lot of work, but it's worth it.
Nothing further than Girl Scouts.
I still have some. Is that true? All of us do? Anyone would like any?
Excellent, excellent. I have everyone called Deb Dwyer now for the Girl Scouts cookies, right? Any other board members?
I'd just like to say congratulations and best of luck to the futures. And I tried joining, but they wouldn't welcome me. Good luck to you.
Thanks very much.
Excellent. Let me give this to you as well. Would someone want to come up and grab it? Come on, Uncle Grace. There you go. And congratulations. Okay? Thank you so much. Thanks for taking the time to come in.
No problem. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You guys too. Thank you.
No offense, but I think the meeting's all going to go downhill from there.
I was about to say, it's a hard act to follow.
It is a hard act to follow.
Especially when there's no cookies left.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So we have a, at 7:15, it's not a public meeting, but we do have Advanced Wheels of Tech, Inc. Are they here?
That's why I said that's a hard act to follow.
Would you like to come on, officer?
Hello.
Please. That was really nice of you guys. Thank you so much. So sir, we have an application for your business with a Class II license for 6 Boulder Parkway by, requested by Advanced Wheels of Tech, Inc. Excellent. So we have your application. You're going to be located at 6 Boulder Parkway in North Oxford. And you are an S-4 car. Excellent. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your business, please?
We are a 31-year-old company that strictly does vehicles for people with disabilities. Family-owned. My parents have owned it since 1988. I've been running it for about 20 years now. And we do natural installs, scooter lift installs, lift installs, fit vehicles that are already pre-made that are accessible to people with wheelchairs, to things like lockdowns, so they can drive safely in their hands. So we can rent them, sell them, service them.
Have you been in Oxford or are you moving into Oxford?
Moving.
Oh, well.
We were in Brentfield.
Oh.
We had a crash and burn in Oxford where they were trying to rent us the building that we got, we got to planning and they went, "Are you sure you need 141?" I said, "Mm-hmm." And they said, "Well, we don't have a 142. We have a 143." It was an extra building on the same parcel. And they didn't, so anyway, we were franchise car dealership. We thought everything was going through.
Right.
So I closed my Brentfield office.
Gotcha.
And then I've been scrambling ever since to get a third location open again. So this became potentially available. We looked at it and the, since the people who were there have since left. They did trailer sales, which is attractive to me because anything with a prior license, you know, means for a smoother way into a town. This is our, like, fourth location if you count the third, our closed and opening for it. So starting to get kind of the use to the getting before the town and the various things between them. So, but certainly the prior license was a big deal to me.
Excellent. Well, their losses are game. We'll take it.
Wonderful.
Take it. Board members, any questions? Anything on the line? Selectmen's side?
How many vehicles?
We're anticipating 20 at start, and that's a mix of employee for sale and service vehicle. We're only thinking that there's going to be three people, three employees occupying the space at a given time. We have ability to various places in Boulder Park to expand to overage parking if needed. You know, not necessarily literally sitting on that site, but nearby that we can go and get and have available customers should we grow in that period of time.
Have you been before a tech review committee?
Tech review, planning, now here.
And you have approval of all committees?
I believe so. I hopefully wouldn't be sitting here if I didn't, but you tell me otherwise.
Do you have a thought plane?
Yes, they do. That's been submitted.
Do you have any affiliation with any other Class II license within Boulder Park?
No. I had one in Brentfield.
You understand that if you get this license, that it has to be restricted to the area that you apply for?
Absolutely.
Can you just mention something about someone else who had an area?
Same guy, same owners. They own the whole park. So basically, they were saying like, "If I need more, then there's overage available somewhere where we could strictly just do some overage parking for like..."
Which you would have to get additional approval for because it would be amendment to the Class II license if you do do that.
Understood. I think that would be a great problem.
Excellent. Appears all paperwork is in order. There is confirmation in here that you have been in front of the planning board. So if no one has any other questions, Madam Chair, are you okay with this?
I am. I just wanted to also alert the board that a Cory check has been done and yielded.
Excellent. Very good. All right then, do I have a motion to approve this license?
I move that the Class II license for 6 Boulder Parkway be approved.
I second that motion.
Excellent. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are four in the affirmative and one absent. Sir, you are all set?
One.
Welcome to town. Welcome to town, exactly.
Good luck. Can I just take our names for the minutes?
Christian.
C-H-R-I-S-T-I-A-N-G.
Yeah.
Q-U-A-N-D-T. Do you need your phone? Paper.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. We're running early. I'm going to hold that one until 7:30 since it's a posted meeting. And I'm going to ask if the Town Manager would like to fill in a few items with her...
I think you can do that. I have a long management report, so thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is approval of the minutes for February 25th. All selectmen were present with the exception of Selectman Daniels.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 25th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
I'm staying. Yes.
And I vote yes. So we have three in the affirmative, one abstention, and one absent.
The next item has to do with the approval of a wayfinding sign. The request is coming through St. Rocks Church Cemetery. They have requested the installation of one wayfinding sign near Federal Hill Road and Main Street intersection. The location is in the mass DOT's right-of-way. This vote would be taken with the acknowledgement that if DOT orders its removal, the church would have to fully comply. At this point in time, I am honoring the request coming through our DPW Director, Sean Dybal, for the board's approval for St. Rocks Church Cemetery wayfinding sign near Federal Hill and Main Street intersections.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the installation of the St. Rocks Church, excuse me, Church Cemetery's wayfinding sign near the Federal Road and Main Street intersection.
I second my motion.
Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Four in the affirmative, one absent.
The next item has to do with another temporary wayfinding sign request. In your packets, you will see an actual request coming once again through our DPW Director. This particular request involves our Oxford School Department, which currently uses space to Connections Church for services on Sundays between 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. The church at this time is requesting the installation of nine temporary wayfinding signs to be, to be displayed on Sunday mornings between 8:30 and 12:30 to help guide congregants to parking and building entrances. The church is actually requesting the signs to be located at the corner of Main and Carbuncle, along Carbuncle Drive, and in the Oxford High parking lot. Although these are temporary signs, Sean, and I felt that this is a decision the board would have to weigh in on whether to take an official vote for it or not.
Excellent. I'm going to hold any requests for motion, and I'm going to open it for discussion first. Anyone have anything to discuss on this item?
Just to confirm, the Main Street Carbuncle is the only sign that's really out in the general flow of traffic. All the other signs are just directional signs within parking.
Along Carbuncle Drive as well, because that's a regular road. I don't know whether they were thinking of putting two at the end of the street and more as you get closer to the actual school, but that is what my understanding is. Right now, I don't think we have, well, they did say four by 10, a four by 10 banner at the Main Street entrance. So it's, is that four by 10 feet, Sean?
Yeah, so horizontal type sign.
Okay. So it's a fairly big sign. These aren't small, little wicked signs you'd see like for a real estate...
No, larger than that.
Larger than that. So this is a bigger kind of sign that would be placed temporarily on that day at the end of the roadway there. And I don't know if all the other signs are going to be four by 10. That's pretty substantial.
No, the signs on Carbuncle Drive are going to be the, signs like on a rod, and then it kind of, it's like a feather shape.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other discussion, board members?
I thought that the sign by law, they said a sign can't be more than four by eight. Are you aware of that?
I think that's why this is in front of us.
Yeah. So this would be an exception to...
Right.
The only concern I have is visibility concern. And the other concern I have is if you allow this to happen at one location, it's subject to occur possibly in other locations throughout the community. I think it just needs more study. I don't, is this sign going to be manned? Is somebody going to be there to ensure that this isn't blocking in the entrance to and from Carbuncle Drive and the school parking lot?
So from my understanding and talking to the minister, these signs would be put up in the morning before services and then taken down after services. I get the sense that they're canvas-type signs, at least the large ones, and suspended between two holes, probably just stuck in the grass. We could certainly advise them on where they should go so as not to obstruct any line of sight issues at the intersection, but they are only temporary in nature. They're only going to be up for four hours or so on a Sunday and taken down. So I think it's important that it goes through the board's selectmen. I think it's also important to note that this church is renting space from the high school. And from what I understand from the minister is that part of their money that they collect will go beyond just paying for the rent in the school. They want to do some charitable donations to the town for various things. So, you know, I'm not sure where you go with that. It seems to have some benefit to the town. We can make sure that there is no obstruction, you know, line of sight issues when they put this thing up. We can either the minister decide where the sign should go, but in my opinion, because it's only up for a few hours on a Sunday, if I'm going through this board and this board feels okay with that request, then I have no objection to it. It does open the idea that another church could ask for something similar. We'd have to revisit that request came.
No, I'm still pondering this, I think.
Well, in the, in the notes, it says that they want, they actually want three four by 10 banner signs. And that they're going to be A-frame banner signs, and that they're going to be secured with spikes and stand backs with covers. So it's not just one. It's multiple that we're considering. But if the limit that we have is four by eight, then I don't necessarily think that...
I mean, how many signs can you read at once? I mean, in fact, Sean, I think it was about a year ago, maybe a bit longer, where you came before us, we had numerous complaints, and you were on board with this, that before we put up any more signs, you would look at each individual request as they come in because we had so many signs. And we had a lot of complaints in town that there were so many signs, even down here at the intersection. I mean, you couldn't go, if you didn't live in this town, you went through this intersection, there were 10 different signs. Turn left, no turn on right, church here. Yeah, I mean, they're all over the place. And so the board had put a start to that, and you agreed to it back then.
That's right, yeah.
I have some concerns about the enormity of this thing, you know, even if it's for a few hours. I mean, how many signs do you need? One sign for me should be sufficient for somebody going by to find where they're going to go for services. And I will tell you that if they haven't serviced there, they have membership. So if these members don't know where their church is, they got a problem. I would think they would know where they run the church.
Madam Chair, so I don't know about anyone else, but this is the first that I've heard that we are renting space in the school to a church? This is the first that I've heard of it. And has anyone else heard of it?
I haven't.
And I have a concern with that in addition to the fact that, I mean, I certainly can understand the fact that, you know, if they're TIF or whatever it is, is paying for the rental of whatever room that they're doing in it. But I've always tried to be sensitive with, you know, church and state, so to speak. And I think that if they were going to be renting space out, I would have thought this board would have been torn, you know? And so I think that that's one issue that I'd like to explore a little bit more. I think we should see the lease on this personally. But the other thing that I have a concern with is I understand the need of why the church would like to have these, you know, wayward signs and whatnot. I, I think you said it, I think it sets a bad precedent for other churches in the area. You know, we just approved one sign for St. Rocks, and this one particular church wants seven, eight signs? I mean, I don't think the townspeople would, nine, I don't think the townspeople want to be driving through the center of town with, how many churches do we have having service in town? One, two, three, four, plus five? So that's nine times 45 signs, just to go away to go to church? I, no, no, I think they request is excessive. It's excessive, I don't think it fits our bylaws, and I think I'd like to see the lease. I don't know how anyone else feels, but, I don't know. Selectmen try on, did you have something that you were, you...
Well, of the nine signs, only one of them, it appears, is going to be on the main road. But I personally think the size of it is a bit excessive. I mean, it can be a congested area. There's crosswalks through there. People already have hard enough time focusing on the crosswalks, so now if we're throwing in a four by 10 banner sign, as you're looking at the sign instead of paying attention to the kid that's crossing the street and crosswalk.
Right.
I just, I think that big of a sign could potentially be a distraction. I'm not necessarily opposed to temporary signs. I just personally think that a four by 10 banner might be a bit excessive right there.
I think limited to one would be something that I could live with, but all those signs that just, as far as I'm concerned, they don't need all.
Well, I agree with the one large sign towards the front, limiting it to, you know, the smaller size that's required in a town. But then navigating through the parking lot, they're trying to get their congregants to one location, whether it's they're renting out the gym space. So being able to navigate over to the gym space, you know, there are people out there that look for new churches to go explore all the time.
I wasn't aware that they were renting a gym space.
I don't know if it's, whichever...
I think you were in the school.
Yeah. Whatever space they're leasing, these smaller signs are directional signs to guide them...
To which door?
Yeah, to which door, time to the school.
I mean, I don't even know what building they're referring to. We've got all those modules there. Is it in one of those buildings? Similar to the buildings we have out back here?
Can I make a suggestion?
Or is it the high school building itself? Where is it?
Yeah, I, good question. I wanted to make a suggestion that we put this on a future meeting. I think what we should do is actually look at the types of signs that they're actually talking about. I know we can look at the size and say four by 10, but I also think feather signs can mean a lot of things. They can look just like you're heading into a used car parking lot versus a small arrow that, you know, points with the church's name on it. So I think if Sean and I look at that, also look in comparison to the bylaw. As far as the leasing aspects, this wouldn't be the first time that a school actually does lease to a religious organization. And I know other districts have found themselves between rocks and hired places because they let other people use the facility, and they rent the facility, and it's not always for school purposes or student activity purposes. And that has been a problem because they raise revenue that way, and then people say you can't discriminate, you know, for the access of a building, even if you're already allowing other people. So I really don't know all the different, you know, lease rental agreements that they might have, but I think, you know, that would be a second exploration, I think, in relation to this. So I'd suggest that we table it for an upcoming meeting. If the chairman, you know, continues to want to revisit it, and you guys would like to revisit it, then we have a little bit more information to make the most informed decision.
I think that makes sense. Do you want a motion on that?
Yeah, sure. Selectmen try on, would you like to make that? I would make the motion to table this topic for a later meeting when we can obtain sufficient information to make a better...
I second that motion.
Excellent. Any discussion? I would just like to request that, I'd like to understand a little bit more in terms of what it is that they're renting for or leasing for, or what the extra is that they plan on doing. I don't know, I'm very confused about this whole thing. So any information we can have on what they're doing, that would be great. How they're allocating, I don't know, I'm very confused about that one thing. Anyway, all right, no other discussion? Okay. Call for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So four in the affirmative, one absent. Okay, and that brings us right up to 7:30 unless you have one?
I have one very quick one.
Quick one, okay.
The Oxford Community Center, there has been a donation in the name of Matthew Pinchton in the amount of $250. It's going to help defray some of the costs associated with referees for the children's basketball league. And also in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A1, I'm just asking the board to vote to accept that said cash donation.
Excellent.
I make a motion to accept the cash donation, the amount of $250 in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A.
I second that motion.
Excellent. Any discussion? Call for a vote?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes. So four in the affirmative and one absent. And that does bring us to 7:30. So we are going to leave the Town Manager's report, and we are going to go to the joint meeting with the Finance Committee. So Finance Committee, how are you going to do this?
I was going to ask Madam Chair, if you can just ask for a brief recess while we actually queue up the presentation.
Oh, sure. We can take a brief recess. How long do you need? 30 seconds.
It's very brief.
Okay.
It'll take me long to get it over there.
Okay, great. Excellent. So we will, so let's take up our 7:30 presentation from the joint meeting with the Finance Committee. I'd like to welcome Mr. Yule. Good evening. And I see your cast of people here. Would they like to introduce themselves, or would you like to introduce them to all of us, please?
Arthur. Sure, my name is Art McGlisspin.
Hi, Mr. McGlisspin.
Laura.
Hi, Lauren O'Neil, Vice Chair.
Ms. O'Neil.
Hi, Lauren.
Sam Wozniak. How are you guys?
Ms. Wozniak, you look familiar to us.
And Joan Muzaka.
Oh, Joan Muzaka, nice to see you. Anyone else? Excellent, excellent. Good evening. First of all, thank you. I know you guys are meeting quite a bit lately and lots of work, and I'd like to thank you for all of your hard work. I'm sure the board thanks you as well. Not easy being on the Finance Committee with money and so forth. So with that being said, Madam Town Manager, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start by just pointing out that, breaking from past precedent, I'm not reading my entire budget message. Rather, I'd like to present to you... my entire budget message, rather I'd like to present to you what I consider to be a culmination of all the important things. I will highlight the fact that by our charter, I am obligated to produce a balanced budget. And I am proud to be able to be before you today to say, with a close working relationship with our finance director and our finance committee chairman and his entire committee, as we go through this process, I think we keep improving on it each time we've gotten together. I feel that way, Mr. Chairman. But we're looking at a $41.88 million balanced budget. And through the culmination of all these discussions, one of the things that I wanted to point out to this board is that we're looking for a 2.58% increase from the previous year for the entire budget. There are some departments that have increases within them, and I'm going to highlight that, but at this point in time, I would like to try to turn your attention to a few things that I think are going to be important in our presentation. So this is going to be my fiscal year 2021 presentation, and I'm just going to give you a budget summary, if you'll take a look. And people at home can actually hopefully see, you may have to click it a couple times because it's, yeah, maybe you might not. Yeah, let's do something closer. See that, we're going to have to move the, oh.
Oh, that's very touchy.
Now it's very touchy. We'll just have that. May have come. Yeah. There we go. So the summary is, I'm going to actually review some of the financial policies, goals, and objectives that actually are my pathway to creating a balanced budget for not only this board, but for the entire town. We're going to review the budget process timeline, what we've actually done so far this year. We are going to take a little snapshot, look at Oxford's demographics, because they are important on how we deliver services and why we do to this town, and gives us a little flavor of where most of our residents are in terms of their average household incomes and our overall population and our unemployment rate. The next item will be looking at our revenues, our state aid, and our savings trends. I think it's very important to look at that because, as you know, when I came here, there were some trends that both myself and the finance chair and the finance director viewed as something we needed to address, and we need to address it as soon as possible. And I'm proud to say that within this budget, once again, we're using those guideposts to make improvements. So I review those trends. Also, I'm going to present a summary of the overall budget within that, how it's broken down, where most of our money is going, those kinds of things. And at the end, we're going to provide both an operational detail of the major points of which budgets are changing, why, some of the rationale for those changes, whether they're increases or decreases, and then also to provide you with a capital budget. I am going to, at some point after we finish this, there is another aspect that I consider to be a major infrastructure improvement that is synonymous in some ways with the issues that we've been taking up to try to address, and that is fixing our roads. And there will be something separate to the budget that's going to be presented as a proposal, and hopefully the Board of Selectmen will forward it as an approved warrant article that has to do with how do we do an aggressive and creative way of trying to fix our roads here in town with a much more vigorous approach. So having said that, we'll move to the next slide, and you'll see that our charter and the financial policies that were developed in 2011 actually provide us with that roadmap. That's why I'm here before you today, because it not only is my obliged to do that, but there are aspects contained in this budget message and in the budget that reflect not only the charter provisions, but also a financial policy document that was drafted in the past. I want to bring the attention to the board that we are actually in the midst this year of having received not one, but two best practice compact grants for our financial services that we're providing. And thanks to the, I think, the great coordination with Katie, we've been able to now be working on what will be a, hopefully, a government finance administrative officer's award-winning budget in the future, a document that will be templated, that will be much more in depth than the one you have in front of you. And hopefully it will be distinguished by that organization, it's very worthy, and communities that look for the budget presentation and the summary. It's very important to show that the town is taking some of those financial policies and putting them into place. The next piece of that grant is actually going to draft and codify a very comprehensive document for financial policies and procedures, not just what comes through the finance director's office or the accounting office, but what happens to our treasure collectors, what happens to our assessors' office. We don't have a comprehensive document like that, and other communities do, and the fact that we don't is something we need to model and go forward to. But in this slide, you will see that I mentioned the reserve fund, the stabilization fund, OPEC liability, capital projects, and contingencies. All of those are required to be spoken to within my financial presentation to you and also to the townspeople. I do think that some of those will continue because they're obviously very, very important, and we will hopefully add to some of those aspects when we actually adopt. And that will come before this board and the finance committee, a future comprehensive policies and procedures. So looking at this, I want to say that we're going to also look at our best practice budget goals. And I have a real strong concern that we have to try to maintain essential resident and business services in a cost-effective manner. We're supposed to provide fiscal management, no, we're not supposed to increase expenditures more than our recurring available revenues, and we're not supposed to use one-time revenues for our operating expenses. I will tell you that since coming here, there are many has told us we cannot do. I know this board is aware of some of those, but there are some other things that relate to not wanting to fund our reserve out of free cash, but to make it part of our overall budget. And those things really are not one-time, they're constant reaffirming that we have a commitment to make sure that should we meet an emergency, our finance committee, through our budget process, will always dedicate a very large amount of money to deal with those kinds of reserves needs. And that would be in the amount of almost $100,000. But I'm just using as an example of moving things from one-time revenues where that wouldn't bill on, but operating expenses. The other thing is, we really should be balancing our budget with realistic projections and not under-budgeting expenses. I know that when a town goes through a fiscally difficult time, and, you know, we make, we squeeze our resources as most and best as possible, it doesn't mean that we should look at the fact that we might have faced something like that and under-budgeted because we were forced to do it, but then when you're in a better fiscal time, you should not keep doing that because it just means you've cut your services and you've done those kinds of things. So those are the practice budget goals that I would be, you know, making sure that within the budget we present and the budget plan that we present to the townspeople, we shall be able to deliver on those. So I'm going to highlight a couple of key budget objectives, and they include preparing for a rainy day, investing in our infrastructure, and increasing our local receipts. Those budget objectives have not changed from last year. What's changed is some of the actual objectives within those goals. And what I want to just emphasize is that whenever you're planning strategically for your finances, oftentimes it takes more than one successive turn to actually produce the kinds of results that you want. And there are things that you should always do to make a community's budget reflect the needs of the townspeople and prepare them for whatever may come their way. So under preparing for a rainy day, you'll see we're going to keep our building reserves, we're going to keep building them, we're going to maintain our free cash levels, and we're going to maximize those as much as possible. I'm going to show you the difference between maximizing and not maximizing by looking at the trends. We're going to seek out one-time revenue sources and leverage grants, and we're going to negotiate pilot agreements that so far are appearing to have great potential for this town for added revenue to the overall operations and for our ability to have things included in the growth of this community and the figures that come back from the state to be certified. We are going to increase local receipts. That's the way the town helps offset things that might just come from the tax levy. You know that the major places for that typically are enforcement areas and compliance areas like our building and land management and planning departments, like our Board of Health and inspectional services. Our Department of Public Health also does more than just septic tanks. They're looking at restaurant compliance and the safety of this community from tobacco and from massage parlors and from tattoo parlors. There's a whole most, most things that I think are really important. But in local receipts, I think that one of the objectives I will continue to maintain as a focus is negotiating host agreements, focusing on our tax collections. And that's an area with two new members in our tax collector office. As you know, our previous treasurer, it started the whole evolution of trying to create a good, solid land auction. We are hoping to do that this summer. We have a couple of properties, even properties that have a residential home on it, and these are very laborious types of situations that you have to get involved with, and I can tell you that we have a strong commitment from the two new employees to focus on the tax collections. We have more than a million plus in outstanding taxes owed to this town by people who have properties. That is an area that takes an enormous amount of focus. I hope to come before this board and talk about how to tackle that. There's just not enough resources in a local budget typically to really try to pursue a reconciliation with those people who may be hundreds of thousands of dollars in arrears. And payment plans are something that many communities are scrapping altogether because it just keeps postponing the inevitable, which is the people continue to be behind. So we're going to prepare for land auction, do a focus on our tax collections, we're going to reconfigure the workforce within, and we have already done that, and we're already realizing savings, so we're going to continue to do that in places where it makes sense. Sometimes that means reconfiguring and outsourcing, sometimes that means not outsourcing, but maybe consolidating functions and creating a one focal communications professional who may be licensed and educated to be able to handle a multitude of tasks instead of perhaps divvying it up and making it more difficult for residents to pursue. We're going to review fines, and we're also going to look at the fee structures as we already have with some departments, and hopefully renegotiate some more contracts like we did for our insurance last year, which saved us over $200,000 to our bottom line for our property and liability. We're also going to invest in our infrastructure. I know that all of you feel very supportive about leveraging the increases that we've been able to get through our free cash certification to funding overdue, long overdue, building repairs. We've made a huge dent in that as of last year, we're still doing that, we're focusing on fixing our roads. We are currently and will be through this year really working to enhance our cybersecurity. This is not something that happens instantly. We're talking about having really professional people be able to make these changes in a very coordinated effort without disrupting our services to the greatest extent possible. We're also going to be updating department technology. We will have softwares that's important. We have our Microsoft Office platform, which is a bane of this woman's existence because it's so old and it's gone out, and we're going to need to replace it. We also have an energy reduction plan. We didn't have that in the budget last year. We only voted for a stretch code. So we're talking about now putting in over $163,000 in projects for capital that's not even coming from our free cash, and it's not coming from our reserves, it's coming from a grant process. And then within the next six months, we will be eligible for another $200,000. So we're talking about in excess of $360,000 that will actually drive right to our bottom line. The first projects that we're talking about doing are LED conversions in our senior center, our library, and also our fire department. And then on top of that, there are a couple other measures that we're doing, including putting variable frequency drives in our HVAC systems over at the schools. And in total, all of those projects will go great to our utility cost reductions to the tune of $34,000 by next year. So that's the first set. And we anticipate that we could have in excess of, you know, 1.5 million that gets saved. So every time we do that, that frees up money for things that become important that we may not have been able to fund in the past. So the next slide has to do with just going through the budget steps. I just want to pick out a few highlights. We had a record state certification of our free cash done in September of this past year, thanks to, I think, really coordinated effort with Katie and her department, but more importantly because we had made a big transition to new software that allowed, after working on all the cases, allowed us to really use the best expertise of our finance director to get those numbers early on. And I'll be reviewing those. You know, as always, we are working towards a model where our budget worksheets get out in November, they're out to the departments, we ask for them back before the end of December. Through the entire month of January, it's back-to-back-to-back meetings with our department heads. Those all took place this past January. We also through the month of February, there had been some additional meetings with our finance committee, and workshops had begun in earnest in the month of March. I'm here as one of the steps in March, and after my presentation, we'll be getting ready for town meeting, in which case we will have more than just the budget as a warrant article. We will also have other warrant articles, and that closes for warrant article acceptance on March 31st. We're planning, hopefully, unless the state changes, but anticipating that April 8th might be the FinCon meeting and public hearing. And then we get our recommendations for this budget, that would also be important as the Board of Selectmen consider putting the entire articles on the warrant. And then, of course, our Maytown meeting is May 6th. We may have to talk about that with the evolution of this pandemic. There is some information that is coming across to us from the Secretary of State's Office and the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, particularly related to crowds in excess of 100, actually 50, but we know that for our forum, we would be needing that 100. I will keep this board and the finance committee apprised of that. There are communities already that have seen bumps up in their case rates, and they're talking about delaying and putting off their annual town meetings.
Madam Town Manager, I'm going to stop you right there for a second. Does anyone have any questions so far from the board? No, we're good?
Thank you. So the next slide has to do with our Oxford demographics. We're, of course, at the mercy of the Department of Labor out of the federal government, and so our population numbers until the census is done are still at 13,980. Our average tax bill continues of this year to be lower than the state's average, actually, I didn't change the date on 2017, but we typically are about, you know, one and a half thousand dollars less to $2,000 less than the state average tax bill. As you know, we're, because we transferred our entire assessor software to Vision, I will let you know that this board has not been able to set that tax rate, but will be very shortly. Great news that the state has moved forward to approve us. They say the software that has created this entire conversion, that has taken more than a year and a half to take very old dated software system that no one else is using in the Commonwealth, to move all of that and to substantiate that the actual information inside the new software is accurate, as required a much more intensive effort by the Department of Revenue. I will tell you that, that you will have before you a tax classification hearing, and when we have that, we'll be able to have the rate that will be set. What I was going to say is if you look at some of the values, we're anticipating that we may have some additional pieces of information that will plug right into these demographics when we're looking at the overall free cash, not free cash, the new growth numbers and the like. So I will be addressing that in a few minutes in the slide presentation. Just so you know, last year we were like 10.5 million in outstanding debt. We've actually had that come down to a little bit more than 600,000. We continue to have a nice low unemployment rate, and our residential tax base continues to enjoy a really healthy competitive infusion from the commercial and business tax base. And that is very good for us, where other communities have not even 9%, that would be contributing to the overall tax bases. We, you know, have more than 24, 25% that has allowed us to grow the business sector and alleviate and alleviate the burden that is on our residents. We continue with the double A bond and I was going to say that everything that has been shown to us has indicated that our auditors in our bonding agencies, their comments had to do with being able to show not just savings, but show investment. A town that doesn't borrow a lot may look to the average person as a really smart move that's thrifty and results in savings, but bonding authorities look at it as a community has not paid the type of investment that they should. So the next slide has to do with the budgeted revenues. I want to explain to the board once again that we're using very conservative estimates. We're going to be using the budget recommendations from the actual governor, which are much more conservative than what will come out of the House and the Senate. We won't know that until long after we are done actually approving our budget. We know that we will have in our tax levy, our new growth and our debt exclusion articles that we have as part of our overall calculations and also be recognizing that we continue to have a reimbursement, which is viewed as, you know, revenues to this town of about 404,000 that relates to the Chaffey School construction project. And of course, we have some indirect costs related to our sewer in our general fund. So if you look at a 41.9 approximate budget, you can see that, you know, 60.5% is coming from the residents and our commercial and industrial businesses. About 32.5% is coming from our state aid and we're anticipating a little over 13 million, even using the budget figures of the governor. And of course, we have local receipts, which generate close to 7% and all our sewer transfer earnings that add 0.1%. The next item has to do with our general fund expenditures. This year, these are the calculations. Our Department of Education will receive 50% of the expenditures that we make for recommendation in this budget. That gets followed by our employee benefits, even though we have reached, I think, third consecutive year of having really negligible movement, particularly in our general health insurance account. That is a really tremendous thing to have, but we still have retirement benefits. We're still paying to the Worcester County Retirement a liability that comes annually and we have other employee benefits that are contained within there. And of course, then we have public safety and public works, which are dueling, Sean, for the next slice of the pie of about 9%. And then of course, general government is a little bit less than that at 6%. So the other ones are more of a little pieces that are fundamentally important and no less important than some of these other departments that garner the bulk of resources. The next item is to show you that the DOR, you know, one of the things I started out was looking at stabilization. The Department of Revenue recommends that any particular community of any size should have between 5 to 7% of their annual operating budget. It should be that money in a percentage put away, put away for a rainy day. Stabilization fund could be used for any particular purpose, but requires a two-thirds vote. It makes it difficult or more difficult for people just to use it for any particular cause that might have a, you know, an upsurge in sort of importance at a particular time. As you can see, in 2014, we hovered around 122,000. Matter of fact, the five to six previous years are, you know, two, to even four to five times lower than what our current stabilization fund is and what it will be based on a new policy that we have drafted with the consent of our finance director and our FinCon to make an annual contribution so that we will be on a plan to continue to add to the stabilization. This year's contribution is recommended in the budget is 250,000 and that will bring us up to 1.34 million, which will give us 3.4% towards that 5% that we're hoping. We anticipate that we should probably be up to that 5% in 2024 unless, you know, we have really great, you know, investment percents coming down, which I'm looking at the market right now, I'm not convinced of, but nevertheless, we are moving in that direction. So we will make that recommendation at town meeting, that 250,000 per op plan gets added into stabilization. The next graph has to do with our free cash trend. And again, this was taking a look going back in 2005 by a fiscal year. You can see that there was a dramatic increase in our free cash certification. Hmm? What was that, 2015? Oh, what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I went too far. I'm sorry, 2015. But you look back, that was 358,000. Pretty much the free cash certification, if you were looking on average, was probably between four and maybe 500,000. And what we are trying to do is really maximize the reimbursements. We make Sean, make sure that every item that is put out where we're receiving state assistance, that we get that assistance because that all gets translated into a higher free cash number. And this year, we're just a little bit lower in terms of our overall amount. We went for a record amount last year, 1.6 million, and this year we have 1.4 million. That means we're already above the Department of Revenue's recommended annual budget amount. So that is a big thing that we have accomplished in a two-year time period. So I'm happy about the fact that we're continuing to maximize those funds because those can be used for one-time revenues and a whole host, whole host of other places. So new growth, even though our assessor is going to be coming forward to you hopefully by our next meeting so that we can set the rate for the taxes, there is a projected $265,969 for our new growth for this upcoming fiscal year. That means our proposition two and a half allowable increase is about 602,000. And, you know, and if you look at some of the previous years, you'll see that there was some substantial new growth in 2018 and 2019. One was because solar farms actually had to pay taxes at one point. And so that was an infusion of money that went to the new growth bottom line and of course IPG and Fabrico. So it is really important to continue to attract businesses and economic development for this town because that helps us actually add to our new growth figures on an annual basis. The next slide has to do with cost savings and projected revenues. I wanted to let you know that we're really trying to shake money from a tree. Sorry, he's kind of, yeah, he flips upside down. The reason why I want to bring attention is that I do see as we're making progress on host agreements that are starting to come online, pilot agreements that are starting to come online. If you just take the marijuana host agreements, and I want to credit the board for having taken the early steps for even putting in the marijuana medicinal program. That in and of itself will generate not just this year, but next year, you know, an additional $25,000 and hopefully we go up to over 2% and that will add at least 50 to 100,000 on an annual basis. The new manufacturing company that's coming in will initially for the first and second year be another $50,000 that will come to this town and they have just submitted documents to the town to say that they have been approved by the CCC. And now they're going before the planning board to get their official permit for construction. So that will be before your board shortly. But that is another one that will have gross sales that will increase with time. And then of course, the new marijuana retail at Curaleaf. Just to give you an idea where some of these figures could go, I had heard after their first month of sales, Curaleaf had brought in close to $370,000 for one month from when they opened. Now, for granted, there will not be every single month that high, or there could be more high, but at any rate, just extrapolating at a lower level for an average of 300,000, they could be projected of getting out over 3.5 to 4 million dollars per year. And for our town, that could be anywhere between, you know, 100 to 200,000 dollars to the base on an annual basis for five years. So I'm looking forward to see what those numbers are come next November because the original agreement only made payments on an annual basis. Our new agreements make them on a quarterly basis, which is helpful for us to certify our free cash numbers. So all agreements going forward, I look for that quarterly payment so that we can actually include it as new revenue. After the fact, you have to include it for the next year and that may not always be helpful. So just again, I want to just allude to some of the energy reduction things. Thanks to the great initiative of our DPW director, we will be saving $68,000 this year to our bottom line for our energy expenses. And we also received our rebate recently of another corresponding $68,000. These are not small monies. They're very important monies and thanks to a collaborative effort, like I said, with the green communities, the facilities department and DPW, we're on a really good road for really putting money to our bottom line. We also renegotiated, I did, with a gas contract that will save us $30,000 this year, next year and the year after for a total of $90,000. And also we've adjusted our ambulance rates. We did this with the prior interim chief and we're looking at making sure that we're at least on par with what other communities are doing. And so we anticipate probably between 43 and 45,000 dollars in additional revenue in that area. So those are some highlights of where I think we can generate some revenue to our bottom line.
Madam Town Manager?
Sure.
Let me give you a voice of respect.
Sure.
Just a second. Any board members have any questions up until this point? No? I have a couple, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Very quickly, this might be more for Katie, but I see that the education is now at 50% of our budget and I think in prior years, we were at about 46, 47%.
Last year was 51%.
Oh, last year was 51. Okay.
There are about, you know.
You can be in on the same. And then my other question was in regards to the, the last slide we just did, the cost savings and projected new revenues. Where does, where do those funds go? Is that going to the general fund? Okay. And then we allocate out of there?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
They'll become local receipts. Some of them don't refer and become local receipts once we've had a chance to see what we're getting.
Got it. Okay.
I have just one.
Yes, I'll start and send.
When we were looking at the pie chart, general fund expenditures, percentage by municipal function, education 50%, employee benefits 19, so on. General government is at 6%. And I was wondering why human services is not included in general government? Is it separate?
It does. That's one of the things that the Department of Revenue separates out in terms of the overall budget that we submit in terms of our values. If you look at the sheet at the very beginning of the budget, past the budget message, you'll see that on top of the, most of these, the way that we, no, it's not this one, I'm sorry.
It's, it's how they generally break them down. Human services is always separate from general government.
Okay. No, it always is. If you look, even the DLS, you know, puts them in successive order. Every community has, you know, a DPW, fire, police, emergency.
How we report to the state.
Yes, it's how we report to the state and they take culture and recreation that gets put into a pie different than human services and even different than, you know, sewer and water. So those are areas that get reported on slightly different.
I don't recall that being shown on our budget.
Oh, okay.
Budgets.
It's actually broken down in the town meeting booklet every year as well.
But when we, when we go line item by line item, I don't recall seeing a line item for human services.
It's not a line item, it's a category.
Some category.
They're all categories of the groupings of budgets, so.
Is it within the general government?
No, no. So when we go through the whole budget, like the town meeting, general government is the first conglomerate of budgets. And then it goes into the public safety and the public works and then those come after. And they total them by their grouping and then the percentages by the grouping. It's been presented that way. I think we've been using the same format that was presented before I was here.
It just got a little confusing to me because I thought it would be part of.
Yeah, I can see.
When I looked at the pie chart and then I saw that, it was an outstanding.
Just because we think it that way doesn't, you know, the state thinks it another way.
That's right. And that's why we've kind of dissected it that way.
Any other questions, board? Nope. A second, Sadie, you're all set?
Yep.
All right, cool.
So the next item is going to be reviewing the overall expenditures and taking the major categories. Obviously, if there's been really nothing happening within a line item, I didn't think it was necessary to, to put those in this particular presentation. But we'll start off with the moderator, which is a very important position for the town. Last year, we made, you know, a slight increase particularly with trying to create signage for our town meetings and the request from our moderator for slight increases in communications and notifications. So there's really no significant changes there. The board of selectmen, there are changes that have to do with making sure that we actually budget this year for some professional services that may be, and I'm hoping for related directly to obtaining licensing software and training and a document reduction effort. We do not have space in this town hall. We have a tremendous amount of documents that go back years and you need professionals to be able to help you figure out what you need to keep by open records and public records and what you need to be able to get rid of. We're talking about things that evolved long before even technology. You know, everything from VHS tapes, there can be like seven to eight boxes of those and tape recordings and there's so many things that need, I know my staff and the board of selectmen staff have been working to try to remove and free up space downstairs and upstairs. So I'm hoping, but it's not an easy and cheap endeavor to get people to help you, even if it's scanning documents. There's very strict regulations on what you have to do for scanning and how you maintain those. So I'm hoping you'll see that there is a little, there's an increase of $15,000 for professional services. And I'm hoping that with the licensing right now, we have a very old, archaic way of keeping track, not just the licensing for class ones and twos, but all the licensing that has to do with our food permits, our common goods, our alcohol, all of those. And other communities have already progressed to a much more uniform type of software codification of the process. That would lead to the next thing, which is through the direction of our finance director, since I really, my office is working, you know, in complete synergy with the board of selectmen's office, not only for your meetings, but for all matters. It was recommended that instead of having this joint disjointed executive staff working in two places and being pulled out two different budgets, that it all go under the town manager's budget. So you'll see that there's an actual decrease of $64,000 in the board of selectmen budget, but that gets turned over into the town manager's budget. So you'll see an increase in my budget, but it's really not. It's all, it's a sort of a break even on both sides. You'll see that there's some services and supplies that were increased to reflect actual need and commendations, we never have enough money for commendations. The board loves to give them, I love to give them, $500 is just not enough, so we increased it by $1,000. Then the town managers, line items, like I said, we actually consolidate administrative assistants. All of the three people that support both offices are all at the executive assistant level. They're exempt. They are not hourly admins. And so there makes sense to not only reflect that in the title, but also to consolidate them under one line item, which is what we're trying to do here. We did increase the professional services and travel. The ICMA has some pretty strict requirements about being able to attend their annual and I buy my contract, I have to do that. So one of the things this year is to make sure there was not enough money in the budget the previous year and we were robbing Peter to pay Paul to make sure that I commit to the standards that this board has asked me to commit to contractually. The finance committee, once again, we will be maintaining a $100,000 reserve fund for the committee should they need it and it comes within our operational budget, not some one-time revenue source somewhere. Financial services, there's really no significant changes under financial services. The assessor's office, you will see there's been. The assessors' office, you will see there's been a reclassification. We had a senior admin clerk who's been with us for eons, and we have an assistant assessor who had also been with us for eons. Once we actually found out, going back to the seventies, that these jobs have really not only changed, but the level of expertise in going in the field is pretty daunting and requires a lot of autonomy and confidentiality because of dealing with people's taxes. And there's another aspect to being able to really truly assess what people's values are for their properties. So instead of having a senior admin, they both deserve to be an assistant assessor's level. It was an advocacy that came from the departmental chair, Chris Popka, and so that reflects the increase to both of those salaries. That is really, really overdue and in comparison to other communities was still below. That, we also have increased field appraisals to the $26,000 so that we can put more effort into that, particularly with this new software. The treasure collector, you'll see that there's been reduced new staff salaries because of retirement. We reduced that line item by $34,000, and we've increased the tax title line item by $5,000. We've also, in the accounting office, we've increased the senior account clerk position by 3.5,000. It's just to reflect the amount of hours that's required to support the massive amount of processing of invoices every week. We've decreased the audit and actuarial line by $10,000. I think you helped get that as a good break for us going forward because.
They, they weren't spending as much time here as they expected, so they.
Generally.
Generally, they don't decrease their, their fee, but they did, they do.
So that, that's wonderful news. Our MIS, of course, we had a, a major retirement, but we also reconfigured the MIS office. We wound up actually eliminating two full-time benefited positions, and we've gone to an outsourcing without benefits attached to that. We've had, our savings is pretty much a little bit less than where we were at, but a lot less if you count the benefit structure that we don't have to provide. The next item has to do with software, we're increasing by $15,000, and that is a related need across all our departments. Legal services, I've asked to decrease this. I was actually even in favor of decreasing it a little bit more. We've been very frugal, and through my office, you know, we do have some expertise, both having worked statutorily in the past and also one of my executive assistants also has a legal background. So I think that has helped us save money this past year. So we were taking a very conservative approach this year to reduce that by $10,000. The personnel, HR, so personnel board, you know, we hired a specialist last year. She just had her one-year anniversary. And man, did we load a lot of requests and job responsibilities on to Joan Frederick. She actually took this position as a pretty substantial pay reduction to the tune of more than $15,000 when she took the position. She was willing to come and see if she could really make a difference here, and I think without question, every single department head, from the DPW to the police and fire, and obviously in town hall, we recognized a huge difference in everything from we actually advertise and renew and update our job descriptions to our classification tables. And those things haven't been done in a long time, and/or there were issues with them, and we are trying to rectify that. So you'll see an increase to that salary line item by $6,000, and you'll also see an increase to the staff education, employee training. Also with regards to physicals, it's been an issue where we had all these different departments doing physicals and some people not knowing who, who should be in charge of that. So we've kind of structured it so that HR will be in charge of that. And we really have not taken advantage of a lot of HR employment types of training sessions. And we are going to do that now that we have addressed some of the major inequities with regards to people's job descriptions and our classification system. Now the bigger focus will be on training, from OSHA to sexual harassment to all of these areas that are necessary for us to do. We, we never really truly budgeted for that in the past. So that would come out of the town managers, maybe the board of selectmen, if it was an initiative that we thought was important enough to provide for the employees. The town clerk has been asking for quite some time and has been readily training an individual within our office to hopefully ascend to an assistant clerk position. And we are honoring that within this budget to be able to provide two assistant clerks. And so that increases the line for salary for both of them, reflecting both a normal increase and a bump up from being a clerk in the office, meaning a regular clerk, to an assistant clerk, to the tune of $8,000. We've also wanted to increase selection worker line by $5,000. I think you have understood that while we continue to have this board appoint new election workers, particularly during the upcoming busy election year. The next item has to do with land management. There is going to be, you know, two major changes. I started out last year bringing on a assistant or a deputy building commissioner to try to generate increased revenues, and realized as well that there was a strong need for having other areas where they had been depleted for resources. During the back-to-back recessions of 2007 to 2010, this town has been without a planning and economic development coordinator. They had somebody who moonlighted as both a town manager and also the planning individual. Since that time, we have not truly had a full-time person. I believe this town suffers in absence of that. I, I know that the planning board genuinely feels that they would like to have this position. They feel that a lot of the things that are falling to my office, de facto, including many of the grant proposals we put together, would be really more within the purview of a planning and economic development individual. We don't have what other communities have at this level of a size town, and that is someone who actively works with developers and actually identifies properties to change zoning related to specific places where we want to change what kind of development might be sought there. We don't do any marketing towards that. We really are a very reactive land management department. It's whoever comes in and asks for a building permit, that's what you get. There's no proactiveness about it. So this individual would be doing that. We put money in the budget last year as a placeholder with the notion that you can't get a quality individual for $40,000, and you need to have somebody who will take the reins of all the things that our master plan has put out there and work in concert with myself and our building commissioners and the planning board to execute things that we're not getting to even currently. The next item, instead of just adding an individual, we're consolidating inspector roles. We've tried this outsourcing thing. It was kind of apparent when I came here. We had a, you know, a part-time board of health agent. We've got inspectors for tobacco, we've got inspectors for food, we've got outsourced nursing services. And so what we're going to do, because the communication and the consistency needs to happen, and that, that is a vital area, which you can't have, you know, an admin who happens to be here being the one who's put in charge of the daily decision-making. And not that we haven't had somebody who we've contracted as a vendor, but it's not the same thing when someone is being put into a queue of what needs to be inspected and how it needs to be. It's different when someone is actually in charge of a department. And with everything that's happened this past year, from triple E to pandemics to, you know, things that are rising to the surface that are really linked to our boards of health, including issues of sex trafficking and massage parlors and tobacco regulations and baking, you know, orders and statutory changes, you need somebody. You need a licensed person who has a multitude of expertise in everything from food inspections to sanitary code to, to Title V. So we will consolidate some positions and actually add to the bottom line $20,000 to bring in this individual who will be supported by the admin. We're also decreasing the professional line item in that budget because you should have somebody who will be more experienced and licensed, and that would be reduced by $10,000. Memorial Hall, we're in it, there's no significant changes to that. And now we're going to get to the big budgets. We owe 9% of our revenues. Start with public safety. I know our chief has been before you. We are having some contractual salary increases for both the upper leadership, and that would amount to an increase of $86,000 across several different leadership positions. There is an increase to the cruiser equipment line of $10,000, and the administrative assistant lines are increased by about 3.5% because of the increased workload. Fire EMS, there is, and there has been a push since I've come here about funding the fourth position within the fire department so that every shift has the appropriate number. We do that in this budget, we call to do it, along with contractual salary increases. It's across firefighting basic and a couple other areas along with this position. We'll see an increase to those salary line items of about $124,000. We also have created a per diem pay scale implementation for using, you know, per diems for on-call, as opposed to just keeping them at an on-call rate. We also are increasing the equipment, uniforms, and inspection lines, $15,000. You can see that, which areas for that. We're also creating a salary line item because everybody has been being paid out at different places for the AOC command. It's been something that has typically gone with the leadership of the department, but it hadn't been funded, so we fund that at the amount that is supposed to be there. And then the next item where you see a major change under public safety is our animal control. Without me getting into too much detail, our animal control officer and her very worthy assistant have never had a review that actually looked at where those salaries are in comparison to other neighboring communities. Our AOC has been recognized in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with the highest of recognitions, and we have had many high-profile cases that have required somebody who was an hourly employee that never really should have been, but who's somebody who we expect leadership from. I would say that every ounce of my intention here is to make sure that the animal control officer, who also does farm inspections, many other communities separate those out. So there is an increase to both individuals' salaries, and that was done after doing a salary comparison. And by far, our AOC, who has been fundamentally incredibly important to criminal trials and cases that have not always given our town the best light, not because of the leadership in the town, but because of individuals who, you know, do not treat animals appropriately, this increase is definitely warranted, and I believe that this will help keep us one of the best AOCs around. And we're talking about very small adjustments to the assistant animal control officer. It also makes this position exempt. It shouldn't be an hourly position. It's a departmental leadership role, and that was another, a sort of give and take that I thought was important, and Ms. Flynn has agreed with that. And we are giving about $1,000 to increase fuel and generate a line item. And the next.
Madam, Madam Town Manager, I'm going to interrupt you one more time. Before we tackle the other second 9% of budget, so to speak, anyone have any questions in regards to the public safety budget? Or anything else that we've covered since then? No? Everyone good? Madam Town Manager, I have a quick question. The first line item on that public safety budget, contractual salary increases to chiefs and sergeants, $86,000. My recollection is that that's five people. Am I wrong on that? Four sergeants and a chief, or lieutenant chief, and four, is it three sergeants or four? So, so that's $86,000 divided by six people? Is that accurate?
I would say that's accurate.
I think one of the.
One of those, but, yeah, go ahead.
One of the increases was because last year's budget had the fourth sergeant within the patrol officer budget.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so the patrol officer budget should decrease?
Yes.
As a result of that?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. And then the other. Just a, just a general question, in, within the departments, I've noticed that there are some decreases in line items, but there's also some increases on salaries. And I'm just curious, I noticed you did mention that on the AOC, you did a salary comparison. Have we done an overall salary comparison on the other positions, or no?
You mean across all of town halls?
Yeah, the ones that are being increased.
Oh, yes, all of those. I mean, we, we had very in-depth discussions with each department head whenever there was a concern about wanting to make this change. And of course, you know, we don't provide you with every single detail about that, but yes, there has been. And that's one of the reasons why some of these areas have gone up. It's not because we're the top paid, it's the opposite. And we're not even somewhere in the middle. Particularly with the AOC, we weren't even in the middle. And, you know, and somebody who's been here almost the better part of a decade, you know, is happy to work, but also, you know, would, I would think, feel really truly rewarded and will continue to deliver, I think, you know, some exceptional service. And I think that that will be more incentive to do that.
If I can just say one thing, I think most of the salaries up to this point that we've reached, other than the animal control, are mostly contractual based on the pay plan. But the assistant assessors, we would definitely look at what other towns are being paid, and we kept them within that, you know, medium range. We didn't make them overpay just, just because they've been here for so long. We make sure that they're within what other towns are paying that same position.
Joan, were you going to say something? Did you say something?
Well, no, I mean, I think the town manager's going to come up, they've come up with a new payment structure plan that we're going to talk about. And I think we had a public works, there's a, there was a, that all about with the public works department and retaining the public work employees and what they're alluding to as far as people being maxed and the skill set that they have to develop. I mean, the, the point being, a gentleman can weld, braze, do carpentry, do paving, rebuild an engine, and he's been there 20 years, and you, and he could be attracted by another community. You're replacing him with three or four different individuals, and they wanted to head that off in the past, so to speak, and make sure that we had the loyalty in the, in the department and kept those skill sets. And that's part of what HR was doing. So this whole thing's evolving all the way down to a skill set, job description, and skill sets. You can't compare apples with oranges. You have to look at skill sets, and the, the new pay plan will reflect that. And then they're coming up with a job description with the skill sets, as I alluded to, in addition to developing a personnel manual and the whole, the whole enchilada to be part of human resources, codifying all that together that we haven't had in the past, so.
Okay, all right, great. I'm also, and no other questions from the board? Nope, okay, thank you.
So the next department is the public works department. And as the chairman of the finance committee has just alluded to, the first item we will see is the overall salary line item increase due to reclassification of a new plan for the DPW, all of the physicians that has been more than 12 months in the making, that has involved upwards of 12 to 15 members of the department, meeting on a monthly basis with us. We knew that, we were looking at job classification, job descriptions that go back to the 1970s and had never, ever been improved or even reviewed to be adjusted. I will again point out the work that our HR specialist did, and we were all dedicated, including Katie, myself, and everybody that sat at that table. And we knew it had to start with understanding what do people do now that they weren't doing in 1970. And how do I equate the worth of that position related to the actual requirements? And so it's, it's an incredible endeavor that we've actually embarked on, and it was something that was completely supported by our DPW despite the fact that it required a lot of honest give and take about what people's roles were, what types of certifications, what, what did leadership need from these individuals at these specific levels? And then to adjust the pay accordingly, based on everything that we've seen. And then to adjust the pay accordingly based on everything that we've seen by payment plans in the area. We are a non-union shop, and I think that if we did not do this, I'm just, you know, hypothesizing that we might have had another contractual entity, but I am really pleased to say that a lot of the dissension that I experienced even when I came in by the DPW employees was really about not feeling the worth of their positions in relation to all the other departments. And I don't know, Sean, if you want to speak to that or not, but, you know, it's been an amazing process. And this is, you know, across the entire DPW structure. So that is a huge endeavor, and because of that, the rest of the items that you will see are adjustments either upwards or downwards of 10,000 or 15,000 dollars. You know, we were decreasing the rubbish removal of $15,000 because in our capital plan, we're getting a small rubbish truck and we won't need to pay that annual amount. We also have increased road maintenance line of 10,000. That's just the generic road maintenance line. We are also committing another $500,000 out of the operating budget to actually finance road improvements, and we are at the conclusion of this. I hope to have Sean Dybal as part of the attached budget presentation to talk about the proposal that we're going to have a number of public meetings coming up about actually doing a much more aggressive debt exclusion to help finance our repair of our roads. You know, tree contract services, 5,000 increase, and the other ones are pretty nominal. I will say that one of the things that's more substantial is the competitive software that we have. Sean did a great job in saving $21,000 out of a company that's overseas, and they have beat everybody's pricing, and it's saved us money this past year, since we haven't had as much snow to go into next year as well, you know? And I see we only put 5,000 for municipal fuel increase, but I'm a little concerned with what I see happening on the global markets right now. That might need to be adjusted at some point in time. The next item has to do with the Department of Education. As you can see, that we have perhaps a budget increase of about 2.9% over last year. That is roughly equating to over $500,000 in direct appropriation to their budget. We also are funding through our free cash numbers, a $126,000 infusion for new math curriculum. That stuff is very expensive, but it's very important to the overall curricular goals of the school. And you will see some other items that the circuit breaker budget offset is 646,000, and that was an increase of 146,000 from the previous year. There are a number of things that the superintendent, Dr. Liz, and I think also Justin Ledoux as the business manager had embarked on, and some of these will continue. They're part of their strategic objectives, the programming that they're able to do based on the increase we gave them last year, that they're going to continue going forward with this year. Has to do with the summer food service program. They are going to try doing a joint custodial type of initiative. They are in need of an additional custodian at the high school. There are some wonderful curricular advancements. They now have a college program with the College of Consignment for Partnership for Early College. They have, the STEM program has been restored to the Oxford Middle School. This is all because of the additional funding and the increased funding we're providing. They now have Chromebooks across the entire district for all students. They are going to be launching a new website, OXPS, coming up this summer. They do have a reduction of a kindergarten teacher based on projected enrollments. Our district is no different than others. There has been a steady decline in enrollments, but regardless, we want to, you know, give them the fundamental tools to bring exceptional results at the district regardless of what the count is. And then there is the special ed contingency fund. We will again, you know, maintain $100,000 in that in case there happens to be somebody that, you know, comes to the district who needs and we did not have anticipated. So those are the operational pieces of it. The next piece was the final aspect of the budget presentation, and that has to do with the capital program. And we have a lot of great projects that we're going to be funding. The first and foremost one relates to the 500,000. We're going to actually contribute to Chapter 90. You might have seen through your documents that have been sent to you that there is a transportation bond bill that has been going through the House and then eventually over to the Senate. They're calling for an additional $100 million to fund Chapter 90. My anticipation is that will happen this year. And if that does, that would be providing us with an additional, probably what, 250,000, Sean? If we get that additional amount. So that would be, you know, on top of the 500 we commit, we could be upwards of $700,000, which would be terrific. That would be a one-time thing the state's doing. I wish they would do it on a regular basis. But the next thing is looking at the building improvements that we're going to do. This is based on the fact that we worked with the finance committee this past year to develop a, and we did this throughout the fall, develop a five-year capital plan that was realistic and reasonable across all the departments. And you'll see that with these building improvements, we are generating, and you can look in the back of your packets here, the actual amounts, but just to give you a smattering of them, we're looking at the side entrance portico and mold remediation in the library, since we're making all of these other improvements to the historic ramp. No time like the present to address the issues of mold and entrance that needs to be upgraded. We're doing the decking for staining at the carbuncle beach house. We're actually putting in surveillance system and flooring replacement of the tile that's broken and cracked here at the town hall. We're also going to be doing some ADA upgrades for the senior center and for the town hall. We are going to pursue a grant as well simultaneously. I'm hoping that this time around we'll get funding for that, but in the event that we don't, we're going to move forward with that. The Oxford Community Center and DPW security systems, we're financing those. We're also doing the cleaning of and replacement of grease traps in the high school and the middle school, along with air conditioning unit upgrades at both of those schools. We're also looking at exterior door electronic access and refishing the gymnasium floor, and we're going to be doing these variable frequency drive replacements, which sounds like a little thing. There are $10,000 and $12,000 we're doing it through a grant, and that will actually yield us over $10,000 in savings annually, just those two things. So that gives you an idea of how we can actually make investments in certain places and save in other places. The next capital improvement aspect is looking at more that is going to be done through our free cash. We have a service, new van that's coming. We do have a match of 12,893. I'm working currently to see if there may be another way to fund that, but at any rate, if it doesn't happen, we have to at least plan for our contribution. It's a $52,000 vehicle that we got through a grant. The DPW fleet is doing a very innovative thing. Sean has come up with a plan to do several vehicles with a lease, which will save us substantial money, and I know that he can speak to that should we need that as we go forward to town meeting. We're also still committed to looking at office space, rehabbing and leasing related to the fact that we don't have enough office space as we're growing the departments from pre-recession levels. We're also looking at the Chaffey Playground rehabilitation of $40,000, the cemetery and parks, and Reebri restroom is a total of $35,000, the two different ones. We are doing something that has been on the wish list of our previous interim fire chief and the current fire chief, and that is to do the life-saving equipment replacement, the SCBA, to the tune of 137,000. And we're also looking at being able to enter into lease arrangements so that the equipment will constantly be upgraded, so that we don't get into a predicament where we're just buying something, we're left with it into perpetuity. And this does almost the majority of them. They were concerned that they could only get like 12, because I think we have something like 30, I want to say 36 or 38 that have to be done, so it gets us up very close to that. The Oxford Community Center needs a generator, and we're using FEMA money to pay for that. The police department is requesting tasers and, I said before, the curriculum we have, and we also have some fiber network switches that need to be done. And we are going to be embarking as soon as we decide on the final, the final rendition of the branding and wayfinding image, we will hopefully this year actually put the signage into place, which we didn't have addressed last year. So that's the next step. And the green community's local share will be about $27,000 for the next $200,000 that we will be getting probably next January. So we're putting that little local share, I anticipate it actually will be less than that. And then the final items on the final capital investments is we're looking at 303,000 from available funds. One is to actually purchase that trash truck I spoke about, where we believe that that will save us substantial money and allow better service. We also have the demolition of the Jocelyn School Annex. It has to be done. It has to be done this year. As you know, we removed people and got them out of the building, but it's beyond repair. It's an old modular building that needs to be taken down. We also have paving. It's a big ask for our cemetery, in particular, our north cemetery residents use that as a virtual track. It's a beautiful place to walk, and it really has been in need of some of the areas where the paving is all cracked or disintegrates. So that's a great thing for the town to have done. And we're also going to be, we have one very old vehicle that we're having, the building commissioner, the assessors, the board of health, they're all trying to share one vehicle. We need another vehicle, and that vehicle that we have out there is not supposed to be really going beyond the bounds of town because it's considered not reliable or safe. So this is being funded through the local receipts that come through the department there. And then the sewer retained earnings, we, both Sean and I, and if we had a plan, they'd also be thinking about this, but I know that the planning board is, we need to talk about sewer here down on Main Street. How do we address that? And this feasibility study will show us how we can do that. And that would conclude the budget presentation. It is a lot of money, and it requires, I think, the attention that you've been giving me, and I appreciate that very much.
You can tell me another question? That was very detailed and very helpful. Mr. Yule, would you, do you have anything to say?
I think the town manager's charted. And, you know, you're looking at the budget, basically it's a $1,078,234 increase, 2.64% over the prior year. And you look at all the components, and it is a little confusing because we did move duck chairs around in people's positions, but when you look at them, they netted out close to even, or a slight increase of 4,000 or 5,000 dollars. So I think we're very pleased with what the approach has been, and the fact that the town manager's been very aggressive in getting grant monies and moving ahead with that, and I think we'll be able to do a lot more. And I think the fact that Sean's been able to come up with some creative rates like this leasing, you know, the traditional leasing, you almost thought 8% or something. Well, we're talking leasing rates of 2%. And so we're looking at these trucks, he's talking about taking off four old trucks that are single-purpose each one and putting on two multipurpose trucks. Okay? So you're taking off old equipment, four pieces, putting on two brand-new pieces that'll do the work of all four pieces. So that's the kind of thinking that we're excited about because we're trying to really get our dime for our dollar, basically, and those are the types of things we've gone through. We've asked a lot of questions, and we've made a lot of, you know, with every department head. The fire chief, who hasn't yet presented, I didn't with him. The breathing equipment, the fact that he was able to go with the vendor that everybody else had, their surrounding communities, we had a vendor that nobody had. And if you ever buy a cell phone, you switch from one vendor to another vendor, you get a free cell phone. Well, basically, he was able to do some of that with this equipment because they wanted our business, and we were going from one vendor to another vendor. He was able to get a bang for the buck and do that with the breathing equipment to get the, and he got an extra bottle. And we talked about, you know, we talked about the time rate. I said, well, how long can you be in a fireboat? You know, he says, well, the bottles lasted an hour. I said, who can handle an hour worth of heat? And so we went with a, he went with a smaller time rate on the bottle. So these are the types of questions, I mean, I don't want to bore you here, but we got into a lot of this minutia so that at town meeting, our hope is that things will go smoothly and everybody will realize that this committee has done its job as far as asking those questions, getting the right answers, and making sure we're comfortable. So when we get before the community, and we say we recommend, we're saying that in all truthfulness, that we've done our due diligence, and we can say that, yes, we recommend, it makes sense.
That's phenomenal. Thank you. And that's exactly what the finance committee's supposed to do. So thank you for your cooperation and working together and so forth, and thank you for your service and for staying and hanging around and all the good stuff. Board members?
Ma'am, I just want to, I just want to say, you know, I don't think people in the community really understand what the finance committee does.
I agree.
They are a very important, integral part of this community, and the way it's set up is perfect because there's no politics involved.
Correct.
The selectmen have no appointment power over you. The town manager doesn't. So you do your thing, you're representing the people as an independent group, your appointment is done by the moderator. A lot of people don't know that. I've had people say, why did the town manager appoint this person on the finance committee? And I have to explain, that doesn't happen.
Right.
You know? And you're going to understand too, your mouth of meetings and preparation that goes into a municipal budget. If people really understood what goes into it, I'm not sure they would want to be on your committee.
Well, it's work.
Because it takes a special person to get involved.
I know as one, as one member of the committee, I spend two hours to four hours before the meeting, and I mean, I've got my sheets marked up with questions and stuff, and I put a lot of time into it, and then we sit down and we have the questions. So hopefully the meeting flows fast. We already prepared, the preparation's there, but we, we're going to meet six or seven times plus the capital equipment, so a budget. And so we'll probably have put in a week's, week's plus worth of work at least.
And it's 100% dedication because there's no stipend involved.
No.
They do it as, as individuals who want to be a part of this community.
And the committee's, you know, the committee's great.
I think all for serving.
Absolutely.
Because that's the toughest committee to be on.
It is. If you do it, you're going to do it right and carefully.
Of course. Right, right, right. And thank you to Katie and to Jen who as well.
Oh, absolutely.
I have to say, I thought last year's budget was good, but this is very succinct and transparent. Thank you. I believe that local government should be as transparent as possible and very detailed, very, it helped us really understand what's going on in each department. And, and thank you, thank you for that. I know a lot of work with starting these tablets, and we have to do it every year.
And then on top of that, we've been doing these pretty broad-sweeping initiatives to try to catch up, and I know this board's been very supportive of that, the finance committee has as well, but it has been, even additional burdens, but, you know, you can't keep pushing it off and pushing it off.
Right.
Because it has severe consequences, and, you know, these are the time periods to do those kinds of changes and make those modifications.
Katie, I don't know if you have anything that you would like to add, you also have to work hand and glove with all of these initiatives that we keep putting together.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. I must say, it's been a very long day. I had cybersecurity class, I did that today.
Oh, true.
So, so I apologize. I think my, my, my brain has, you know, been done for today.
Madam Chair, can I, I know that it's not part of the operational budget, but it is because we are adding funding in for our roads and bridges. I know our DPW director is here. We are going to have very detailed presentations. He has a very brief presentation to talk about an article that has to do with trying to rapidly fund our roads over a 15-year period with phased-in schedule. And I just want to be able to start talking a little bit about it because it really will deserve its own amount of time repeatedly with the public. You know that we have held an awful lot of public forums last year in advance of our Fall Town Meeting about the DPW headquarters, as well as, you know, our roads. fall town meeting about the DPW headquarters as well as, you know, our roads. And of course, the main topic was, we've got to find out, you know, how to fix our roads much more quickly. And we gotta do that before we, you know, embark on actually building a new DPW facility. But even with the facility, we just, people wanted us to get better numbers on it. So those are the two walkaways. We know that we can't do, even with this 500,000 that we're putting into the budget again this year, that's three years in a row. It's a drop in the bucket for being able to address all the secondary or ancillary roads in town. So Sean, if you can come up for a second. It's a brief, but it's important because you may get asked or what else you want to be doing that relates to, you know, additional financial articles that the Finance Committee and yourself will have to take a look at.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, this is the third year we're putting, we're matching the Chapter 90 money with 500,000. And my discussion with Sean over the years has been, that, that keeps the roads, and in other words, as bad as they are, they don't get much worse, but they're not getting any better. So what Sean's addressing is an effort to get, get us up to where the roads are at eight, something better than 70%. The, the two things I think we all hear from the community is the roads and maintain your buildings. Don't let your buildings deteriorate. Respect the buildings and respect the roads. And I think we're, the budget and, and the conversations we've had as a, as the Finance Committee are addressing those two needs. And I think we've heard it from the community and that's, that's been the focus.
Yeah, I agree. Board members, are you, you okay with hearing the presentation?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah? All right, we're way over our, over the...
15 minutes.
Yeah, the 15 minutes on the finance. I think next year we should give you a full 90 minutes.
Yeah, I don't know what to put in.
You know, I think next year, let's just make a note to put 90 minutes for that budget for next year.
No, 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 it's not any blame.
No, 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 let's just make sure we do that. We still have a bunch of stuff to go over. But yes, Sean, you have the floor. If you could give us a brief overview and thank you for hanging in and we appreciate it.
All right, thank you. So as the manager alluded to, the community has spoken, we've listened, we've gone back to the office and put together the makings of a plan that we'd like to propose to the community to really make a splash in town, improve in town roadways. So on the screen you see now is our townwide average on our pavement condition. And so you take a roadway, you survey it and the best roads are at 100, the worst roads are at zero. And our network average right now is at 61, which is at a real tipping point because when you get below 60, you're in the category where you'd be basically well, well reconstructed in a roadway, which is a very, very high number.
60s is the magic number.
Yeah, 60s is open. So we're there now, we're at a tipping point. And the orange line you see there is the, is the amount that has been funded in the last few years. That is the Chapter 90 allotment of about 500,000, the towns match re about 500,000. And as the Finance Committee Chairman talked about, it maintains, it really just maintains the condition it's up there now. Yes, we paved your street, you'll see immediate benefit, but as a network average, it's, we're no worse and, or no better than where we are today. The blue line is if the town could not match Chapter 90. And it's, and it's just Chapter 90 only, you can see we fall right off the map if we just relied on Chapter 90. And so when you say that the town could match Chapter 90 with 500,000, to say that over some length of time is really a lot to ask of the community because that's a lot of money. And there's no telling what could happen with the economy and that sort of thing. And no telling if the town would come up with that match. So the gray line is a proposal that we will roll out and that is to spend 15 million dollars over, you know, a 20-year period, 25-year period with three installments of 5 million dollars. And as you can see, you know, the, the first two years, you can see we take our PCI from 60 and bring it to 72. Then it levels off because we, we spending Chapter 90 money to maintain where we're at. And then the second infusion over the next two years, we bring our PCI to 79. And again, then we'd be spending Chapter 90 dips a little bit, not appreciably, but then it goes up to 78. And then, you know, after year 2032, it tails off, but once we get out that far in the, in the model, it, it's not necessarily as accurate as what is implied here by this line. But what's interesting and what the, the main premises for pavement management is it's easier to keep a good road good than this to, after reconstruct a roadway. You've heard me say the analogy is it's a lot easier to scrape and paint your house than this to replace all the siding when it's rotted. Right? So, so that's where that comes in. If you want to go to the next slide. So this is roadway improvement by miles and I've got it in two colors. The blue color is called capital miles. That's, you know, miles of roadway that we pave or reconstruct. The orange line is more of a maintenance type of activity such as crack sealing or chip sealing. And, you know, micro-surfacing, things of that type, more of a preservation than a capital construction. So again, I put this into three scenarios. Chapter 90, by 2032, we'd only be able to pave 10 and a half miles. We could preserve 47 or so. With the Chapter 90 plus the town match, we could pave 28 and a half miles and preserve 48.6. But if you look at the 15 million dollar option, we can pave 49 miles of roadways and preserve 48. And the, you know, the public centerline roadway mileage we have in town is about 90 or so miles. So if we go with the 15 million dollar route, we're basically touching every street in the town with either capital construction or preservation. And, and that's a pretty big deal over, over, you know, to 2032 to be able to do that. So, you know, 12 years. So the, the next slide would represent the two and a half debt exclusion that we would need to raise the 15 million. And as I said, we'd be looking at three installments of 5 million dollars each. And so I put this in as two, two valuations for our house. House A is the, is the average household valuation in Oxford right now, 228,000. And I put in House B at 450,000, just so we could see those two bounds because we're probably in the community somewhere between those two bounds. And I actually looked recently at the 2,000, I think it was 18 valuations, and there are many that are not even 228,000. So, so if you look at those two colored lines, the blue being the 228,000 dollar house and the orange being the 450,000 dollar house. The, the numbers you see there are the increase in taxes on a two and a half debt exclusion. So you see six and 12 for the first five years, 12 and 24 for the next six years and so on. And so because it's in a step fashion, it's because we're borrowing 5 million dollars at a time. And so somebody who might, you know, years one through five on the 228,000 dollar house pay $6 more a month in taxes, when we get to the second installment, they're really only then paying $6 more than they were before and, and, and so forth. So it's not as though, like you look at the middle box where it's, you know, the pyramid, that's not the, that's not the increase on day one. That's in the stepwise fashion. And then as we go through the years, then it comes off the taxes and by, you know, by the time we get to 2046, it's all paid for and we will have paved every street, all the while still receiving 500,000 dollars a year in Chapter 90, hopefully more as the years go by. So that will be the question, you know, posed to the community. We've heard it loud and clear, we want roads paved. The question is, how much are people willing to pay? And so that'll be the conversations that we'll have through many public forums and outreach campaigns to see, you know, what people want and what they're comfortable paying for.
And Sean, just to clarify, it's, so the 25 years repaying the, the borrowing back over 25 years, the, the repair, repavement, whatever you want to call it on the roads, that would take place over a 10-year period?
12 years.
12-year period?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so 12 years. 25-year payback, the 12-year process.
Destruction, right.
Okay. And is that doing it ourselves or is that subbing it out? Is that contracting it out?
So it's a, it's all of the above.
Okay.
So, you know, to spend 15 million dollars in 12 years is quite a bit to do.
It's gross, yeah.
So it would be a combination of town forces with rented equipment, you've heard me say that before.
Yeah, yeah.
And also contract work as well. The, 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 the main focus really is to try to stretch the dollar as much as possible. So obviously, say repaving a Sutton Avenue is not something we could do in-house, but paving a, you know, Quo Bag Avenue is something that we could do. So it would be a mixture of, of all of the, the above to try to stretch the dollar as much as possible.
And then there were some roads that people wouldn't be able to touch, like we can't do Main Street, we can't, because those are state roads.
Well, right, outside of the town center.
Outside of the town center.
That's right.
Okay.
What about Chapter 90 roads?
Well, that's a, that's a old definition. So Chapter 90 is, is the pot of money that's available for any public roadway. It used to be back in the day, Chapter 90 were only interconnecting roadways with municipalities. That's gone by the wayside for quite some time. So now it's all, any public roadway is eligible for Chapter 95.
Okay. What about Route 56?
Route 56, that we just paved.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is under local jurisdiction.
Okay. Now, you had mentioned in the past about the possibility of purchasing a paving machine?
Right.
So that we'd be able to pave our own streets?
That's right, yeah.
Are you still fond of putting them in?
Certainly, yes. One of the ideas is to rent the machine first, to understand how it works and, and kind of get the feel for it. And if that works, then, then have a proposal out there to buy a paving machine.
Some of the towns around us do have their own...
They do.
Their own paving machines.
They do.
And they go right into the neighborhood areas. I've seen it in Dudley.
Yes.
They go right into the, the neighborhoods and they do a beautiful job.
Yes.
And it's all done by the town.
Right.
Where I know that in the past, if we wanted to do some heavy paving like that, we had to contract it out.
Right.
And I mean, we've got some streets, especially in the lower street area, I know we've done that, we did that one over. But all those side streets, Walnut, Spruce?
Yes.
They all have to be done. Those are the old oil streets?
Yes, yes.
Which we don't do anymore.
That's right.
And those streets eventually should be done over with Macato.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
And if we had our own machine?
We could do it. And, and, but also with contract help too. You know, for some of the longer runs and the more, you know, more paying thoroughfares for sure. And we would be able to knock out a lot. And that's like I talked about stretching the dollars, is being able to do that.
Well, this is the number one concern of the community right now. And I'm sure that every member of this board, selectman have heard it. What about our streets?
Yeah.
You want to spend money on this and you want to do that. Why aren't you taking care of our streets?
Okay, if we go back to the first slide...
This is the answer. We put it out to them and...
Right.
The first slide, that's the answer right there. If we just spent Chapter 90, we'd fall off a cliff with our pavement condition. If we spent the Chapter 90 and the town match, we don't get any better than where we're at now. The only way that we're going to make a solid improvement is by debt exclusion, by going up for a handsome sum, sum of money to really go after these roadways and get them up to a condition that is, that the town would be satisfied with, but also with a condition that we can then better maintain going forward.
Oh, yes. I think this is what the townspeople were trying to tell us for a long time, you know?
Madam Chair, two, two things that come to mind. I mean, Sean and I have done a lot of research. I've looked at a lot of other communities, the town of Spencer?
Yeah.
Did something similar, actually with even higher borrowing authorization. But, you know, the, the townspeople have been very pleased with the fact that they've been able to knock out a lot of roadways. And, you know, I think Sean and I discussed about doing this in a great data fashion and, you know, we're anticipating what the actual borrowing would look like. And so when you think about 10 years for the average household to be at $6, I mean, that's, that's a wonderful thing. It's not something that's so onerous and, but would have substantial results. The other thing is we are still currently pledging 500,000, you know, as part of our regular operations. And that is completely frowned upon by the Department of Revenue because they really feel that that is an infrastructure, one-time capital thing. And, and it takes away from other things that we could be doing. And we're gladly doing it because it's a priority at this moment, but, but understand too that we have to make that switch eventually because it's not doing what we would hope it would do. And it also is not consistent with the best practices for the Department of Revenue.
I agree. Yeah. Mr. Yule, do you have any, have you guys looked at this at all or is this...
Yes, we have. And, and I think Sean, Sean's right about writing, renting the equipment. We talked about maybe doing the cemetery. Strangely enough, they, where the Clara Botter's is buried, that's the worst section of the cemetery.
You should have carried it.
Because that's where everybody goes to visit the, the gravesite. And an annex between the high school and the police department, I know, talking to Chief Sad, that's very important. So his people can cut their teeth on some of these projects and then really get familiar with the equipment like he was alluding to, and then we can go out and really do this. Obviously, phasing this in, I mean, we, we create havoc. If we have all the money in the world and we wanted to do 50 miles of road in our community, people would be in awe. You've got to be careful what you wish for. Nobody can get home or go to work if you had everything at once.
This might be a good time to do all of that. We're almost there.
You want to be able, you want to be able to, you want to be able to do this in, in a measured way.
Right.
So it makes sense, I think, both from a financial standpoint and with Sean, like he said, we're a combination of everything with it. Obviously, we wouldn't have done Charlton Street, we had at Amarillo, and he wouldn't do Sutton Ave, so...
Right.
But...
It sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I think so too. And I think, I think we will do our real due diligence in setting up public forums and we welcome the boards to come and give input. I think it's valuable that they hear from their elected leaders and appointed leaders as well as the management.
Sure.
And I think we have a really good shot at this, I really do. I think we've been listening and trying to do it in a very measured way and I think this would ring a true to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's 9:10 and we have six pages. Just kidding, we only have...
It's not that.
No, it's not that. So I'm going to, Madam Town Manager, do you need a, a break? Would you like to be selectman's request first or you just want to dive in?
No, dive in.
All right. That's not a problem. Okay, so let's, page two, Town Manager Report.
I think we have, the next one is the MSBA funding vote.
Oh, sure.
This is timely. The school board met last night...
Sorry.
No problem. It's at the bottom.
Yes.
Wait till you see the motions, they're pretty large. So the school board voted last night. I have been in touch with the MSBA as, as Justin would do. And we had been informed that if we were going to submit projects for grant funding through the Mass School Building Authority, that we needed to actually both prioritize them and actually submit them separately. So you see a page after the initial request of the actual school projects across Chaffee-Barton Middle School and High School. So what we need this evening is there has to be a joint vote. The vote of the school board has already been done and we need the same kind of vote that authorized by the Board of Selectmen to be able to submit this statement of interest to the MSBA. And so as you can see, the language has to be consistent and each motion has to be pertinent to each of the schools because the funding request is specific and it varies depending on which school.
All right, maybe up to it.
Up to it.
All right, let's go. Woo-hoo, get this done. All right, let's go, woo-hoo, get this done, motion number one.
Having convened an open meeting on Tuesday, March tenth, twenty twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Oxford, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent or acting superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March third, twenty twenty, twenty AM, Chaffee Elementary School located at Nine Clover Street, Oxford, Massachusetts, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Under Priority Number Five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation, ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, including roof repairs due to leaks, foundation repairs due to crumbling, bathroom repairs due to rotting, and required plumbing modifications, building siding due to erosion, building management system, heat controller replacement for more efficient operations for the heating system, and gym flooring replacement due to safety concerns, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Oxford Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I second that motion.
Thanks.
Any discussion, called for the vote?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes, so four in the affirmative, one absent. Meg, do you want to read the next one or shall we do it, Mike read it, Mike, do you want to read it?
I don't mind, it's okay.
You're all right?
Yes.
All right.
Having convened an open meeting on Tuesday, March tenth, twenty twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Oxford, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent or acting superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March third, twenty twenty, for the Clara Barton Elementary School located at twenty-five Depot Road, Oxford, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Under Priority Number Five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, including roof repairs due to leaks, foundation repairs due to crumbling, bathroom repairs due to rotting and unsanitary conditions, building siding due to erosion, and gym floor replacement due to safety concerns, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Oxford Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second that motion.
I'm motion, I have second, first, second, any conversation, discussion, call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I vote yes, four in the affirmative, one absent, last one, Meg?
No, there's two more.
There's two more, serious, two more schools, oh my god. Okay, go ahead.
Having convened an open meeting on Tuesday, March tenth, twenty twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Oxford, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent or acting superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March third, twenty twenty, for the Oxford Middle School located at four ninety-seven Main Street, Oxford, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Under Priority Number Five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, including floor tile and baseboard replacement due to asbestos from loose tiles, boiler replacement due to age, and bathroom renovations due to age failure, and not being in compliance with ADA regulations, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Oxford Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second that motion.
Although, and first and second, any discussion, all those in favor?
Yes.
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 I vote yes, four in the affirmative.
This is like a challenge.
One absent, you know what I, I feel like saying, like, let's waive the reading, remember how, you know how they use that in town meetings?
You can't do it, it's printed in the warrant, but for some reason, they want it read into the record.
Got it. Meg, last up, or you want to, Mike, do it?
I don't mind.
All right, go ahead.
I've, I've kind of got it, that.
Right.
It's similar language now.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Having convened an open meeting on Tuesday, March tenth, twenty twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Oxford, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent or acting superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March third, twenty twenty, for the Oxford High School located at one hundred Carver Drive, Oxford, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the future. Under Priority Number Five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility, including auditorium floor replacement due to hazardous conditions, roof replacement repaired, repair due to leaks, flooring replacement due to age and hazardous conditions, and replacement of VFD motors due to energy efficiency, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Oxford Public School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I second that motion.
I have a motion, I have a second, all those, any discussion, all those in favor?
Yes.
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 I vote yes, four in the affirmative, one absent. Nice job, selectmen and trants.
Very good, very good, we're so excited, we can submit it now, yes. The next item is Class One License Administrative Change, your office has received a request to amend the federal ID of a Class One license at Three Harland Drive, the licensee was formerly Lineboard Industries, Inc., doing business as LBI Motorsports, it will now be LBI Motorsports, Inc. All the other information of the license will remain unchanged.
I move to amend the licensee name and federal ID on the Class One license issued for Three Harland Drive.
I second that motion.
Excellent, any discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes, motion carries, four in the affirmative, one absent.
The next item has to do with appointment to the Disability Committee, you have in your packets Wayne A. McFarland of twenty-nine Wayne Ave. Would like to be appointed as a member, all the members of Disability Committee will eventually be appointed to the Disability Commu, the Commission, once they've accepted their operating bylaws.
Yeah, so I make a motion that Wayne A. McFarland be appointed as a member of the Disability Committee to serve until project completion.
Second that motion.
Excellent, any discussion, all in favor? Absent.
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we are three in the affirmative, one abstention, and one absent. Thank you.
The next item has to do with a, a gender, subject that the chairman asked me to put on my manager's report, and that is by a board's policy, it's now time to choose a date in which to evaluate your town manager. The evaluation form is located in your packet, and Dennis Lamarche was hoping to do it on the meeting of April fourteenth.
I move to schedule the Town Manager's Annual Evaluation for the Selectment Meeting on April fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Second that motion. Yes.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, no discussion, sorry about that. Four in the affirmative, one absent, we will have it on that day.
Thank you, the next item has to do with the ongoing coronavirus, public health issue. You have information in your packet which is already outdated, the actual incidence continues to climb. I just wanted to make sure this board understood that the Board of Health is working closely with the administration here. We are having a full, all hands on deck meeting on Thursday with all the department heads, everybody has a particular role to play. As you have probably heard on the way in here, that the governor has declared a state of emergency. You know, part of that is to make sure we have the option of being eligible for federal funds in the future, but the other piece is it's really an evolving issue, and I know that this is something none of us have really faced, and I do expect that we may have to have a meeting with this board in between now and our next meeting. The next item has to do with Chapter ninety, funding, we have been informed that the normal apportionment with two hundred million to all towns is gearing up us for five hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-two. We're hoping that we will get the additional money as it comes forward, but your office has received notification of that amount. The next item is just to let you know that my office had been in touch with our legislators recently. There was a major transportation bond bill, and Sean and I put forward several projects into that bond bill in hopes that they would actually file amendments to it. They included the reconstruction of Lester Street Bridge for five hundred and fifty thousand, the reconstruction of McKinstry Dam Pond and Road for seven hundred thousand, the Main Street Project Design Engineering and Streetscape's improvements, five hundred thousand. Sutton Ave Sewer Installation Project and Design and Engineering, three hundred thousand, and the sewer construction project for three point three million over on fifty-six and Route twenty. We're just making sure we put in, no guarantees with bond money, but it's an election year, so anything can happen. The next item is the South Central Massachusetts Veterans Service District, I just wanted to inform this board that the four towns that belong to that, through the direction that you have given and authorized the manager to act, we now are almost to the point where we will have hired a Veterans Service Director per Massachusetts statute. We continue to have our own Veterans Service Agent, but this director oversees the agents for four towns. We have increased our budget accordingly for eight thousand dollars for that requirement. We expect shortly that for that person to have approved the paperwork, and they should be coming on board soon. I just wanted to update the board for that, and you can see the information with all the signatures in your packet. The next item has to do with an initiative that last year with department heads, we had done an entire sort of value analysis about different projects that we thought was important. My office felt that customer service was important, we have taken a number of initiatives from putting in our VoIP phone system to the way that we park and let residents and business people park closest to the building. The next initiative has to do with opening our town hours, these hours have existed for a long time because of pre-recessionary cutbacks, I believe it's time to make sure that we have more extended hours for the public. And the Personnel Board also approved of this, we presented it to them. Of course, I'm going to give people time to make any changes to accommodate, what we're hoping is they will stay open half an hour later every day, and then on Wednesdays, actually have an evening in which we're open. I know that a lot of building contractors will be thrilled with that, as will people who work till five o'clock and still can't get here. So that would occur, and we would reduce the hours on a Friday, but still be open till twelve-thirty. That will be a memo that goes out to all the town hall, and we'll see how it goes, and, you know, I think that I have been also approached by a number of people who were hoping we would do something like this.
Madam Town Manager, I'm just going to ask, any board members have any comments or questions on that? I know it's not a voting item, but it's a big change, I just want to make sure the board has an opportunity to speak on it. Everyone okay with that?
Might try to do some surveying too, once we do this, to see what the public thinks and how busy we really are. I just know that having worked with other towns that have an evening office hour, sometimes that's one of the busiest days in hours. So we'll see how it goes, you know.
And will the building department and so forth be a?
Yeah, every department that really should be serving, other departments that don't serve the public directly, that, but the town clerks, assessors, yes. That will be rotating staff to make sure.
Departments, how do they feel, the employees?
I've been asked and approached by a number of departments that would like to have, you know, a shortened day maybe on Friday, but more importantly, you know, be able to get through, I mean, stopping at four-thirty every day is, it's not forty hours a week to begin with. So what we would be doing is actually opening ourselves a little bit more than the, you know, the thirty-seven and a half hours, and then also elongating the, you know, window of opportunity for residents to come on an afternoon or more importantly, on an evening, you know, it's not, you know, most communities are doing this, the town of Dudley, other communities around us have been doing this for years, you know.
But that'll be a big change for townspeople.
It will, it will, but you know.
There'll be a lot of, there'll be a lot of pulling doors at one o'clock on a Friday going, and then our phones will ring, right?
So the biggest thing is, we, we're really not busy on a Friday.
Oh, that's a question.
That is, you know, it's, it's like dentists' door nails at times, which allows staff to get a lot of work done. And, you know, just because the door shuts doesn't mean that staff still won't be working behind and doing that, but it's really, you know, doing it from the perspective of understanding, people don't work nine-to-five jobs every day nowadays. And so if we provide one night to do that, we try, try to choose a night where we have few board meetings, planning board, zoning board, and select board, so we'll see how it goes, it can always be changed back, but right now, I would like to try to move it forward as a customer service initiative. The next item is just to let you know, the next two items, and I see our DPW director is still valiantly here, we're like joined at the, we just like live at town hall nowadays. So if you have any questions, Sean will be able to address them, but in your packets you will see a memo that comes, that was sent to you in a different version, it was sent out to the residents. I wanted to make sure you saw that it was mailed out to the residents of the Zacharappa area, and this was an estimated schedule for the project, and it's outlined there, I know you guys have seen it, so I won't go through it, but it's on track, that's the most important, and we expect this project definitely to be moving forward, you know, with an estimated start later in the summer, we're hoping, so. The next item has to do with railroad track maintenance, you guys always ask me these questions, so we want to bring it back to you. Sean has had opportunity to address the fact that we would have a meeting scheduled next week with Genesee and Wyoming Trackmaster, that's an interesting title, to discuss the track maintenance issues, particularly on Water Street, so once again, I want to thank the board for bringing it to our attention. Once again, I think Sean has a good working relationship, and we'll get that moving in the right direction.
All right, we'll speak to Madam Chair, yes.
If I may, just on that.
Selectman Sean.
Um.
Our reader.
Would you mind, just when that meeting happens, following up with us to let us know, please, so that I can stop harassing you about it?
Can you go, well done.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right.
Sean, if you don't mind, also in regards to the traffic railroad tracks, will, I know we're going to make an emphasis on the Water Street, and that does need to be made a priority. Any thought to have, to having them talk about Sutton Ave too, and there's, there's a missing plate now, I think, on Sutton Ave, and anything along those lines?
Yeah, we're going the whole route.
You're going the whole, you're going down?
From top to bottom, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other board members, anything else? Okay, thank you, thanks, Sean.
The next item has to do with the town charter amendments that we adopted by our town meeting last spring. They have shown that our charter amendments have been adopted by the Commonwealth on February seventh, and our charter has been updated, particularly Chapters two, six, and eight. Haven Extrax is an update here, which I told you earlier, that they have been approved by the Cannabis Control Commission as a manufacturer, and they are applying for their building permit shortly, and currently working on their site plan, so hopefully very soon up and running. Haas Incorporated, it's a Class Two license violation hearing that you had had as a board. Officer Osmus has given the Selectmen's Office an update on that particular vendor in town, the Class Two violation notice after the thirty days were given. There have been a removal of any vehicles in excess of three that were allowed by the license, and by his inspection on March second, they were complying now. We've had a couple of resignations, one I know your board is aware of, Mr. William Spitz has resigned from his current position of the School Committee effective March first, twenty twenty. I know we all want to thank Mr. Spitz for his twelve years of service to the town of Oxford as a School Committee member, which is no easy ordeal. As a note, the Selectmen and the School Committee will hold a jointly posted meeting to fill this position because it's in the off cycle. Robert Krasinski has resigned, has also submitted a resignation from his position of Bandstand Committee. Once again, we thank him for his service to the town of Oxford, and obviously, we'll be looking for people with the same kind of dedication to serve on the Bandstand Committee. Septic installation season, I know everybody's waiting to hear about this. We, it's been advised by the Board of Health Agent that the septic installation season is now open. Start your engines, folks, it's March ninth, it opens twenty twenty. Meeting reminders, just so that you know that we have a civil service workshop coming up on Thursday, March twelfth, excuse me, at five PM, followed by an executive session at six PM, the meeting will take place on the first floor of Town Hall Conference Room. The next two items, one is Aquarian Customer Advisory Board, they're having their spring advisory board meeting up at the Pine Ridge Country Club, it's quite nice, it's on March twenty-fifth, from six to eight PM. If you guys would like to attend, let our office know, and we'll sign you up. And then the final, Judy Lochner, we want to make sure that we, once again, inform everybody about the Great American Rain Barrel Company, once again, they're selling sixty-gallon rain barrels, there's one downstairs. There's one downstairs in our town hall, and there is a discounted price of sixty-nine dollars. And of course, it helps with water conservation. And they are accepting orders which are due by April nineteenth, and you can pick them up on April twenty-fifth, between ten and twelve at the W Ed. It's a wonderful initiative. She actually got a lot more people once we went through this meeting, so I expect that she'll get that as well. So thank you, and that is it, folks. Very nice. Thank you, Madam Town Manager. That was a lot of work in a very short period of time. Selectmen's Request, Selectman Troyano.
I just have one thing. It was kind of convenient that we were talking about it tonight with the cemetery. I've had a few people approach me and ask if there's any way if the town can put a porta potty in the area of the cemetery for the people that are utilizing it to walk, so that they don't have to go and bother the police station bathroom. I don't know if it's feasible or not, but I was asked if it was even something we could consider, so I said I would ask. Cemetery. For Sean, what do you offer?
Yeah, I think we have one there.
Is there one?
I think there is, yeah.
I didn't. I didn't check, but I was told that there wasn't one, so I was asked if I could ask about one.
They might have taken it for the winter.
Yeah.
And it hasn't made it back yet. I, like I said, I'm not sure. I had a couple people ask me about it that utilize it on the basis, so.
No, I hear you. All right, we'll follow up with that.
We'll get it there.
Thanks. That's all.
Thank you.
No.
Selectman Daniels.
Just one thing, the dog park. I have been there with my dogs. It is wonderful, it's awesome, it's a beautiful area. I have seen, heard some concern in regards to people cleaning up after their dogs there. There, there's a nice, like, house for doggy bags with the trash can right there, but there's no doggy bags in that house. I don't know if that's who we can reach out to to make sure that.
Don't look to the doggy bag.
Sean Dybald, resident doggy bag man and DPW Director.
Yes, so.
Sean, you have an answer?
I have an answer.
Excellent.
So we never announced that it was open. And it did this on purpose as kind of a soft opening to see how it might be received, and I'm finding out it's totally bombed with people, and people love it.
Yes.
So we're actually now that it's done with the project.
Yeah.
It's still a punch list. It's perfectly safe and fine for people to use, but we don't have the electrical controls in the cabinets. The lights aren't working yet. And the doggy bags, all we have is what came with the units, is like a starter set. So we just ordered a case today of like three thousand bags. Yeah, so once those.
That'll last a while.
That'll last, hopefully, a while. So we'll get those.
Preliminary date for the opening, I was just approached yesterday, was to put on tap April fourth. It's a Saturday at eleven o'clock in the morn. That's what they would like to do because of this very urgency about.
Yes.
Well, I think it's getting very well used, I think. It's, I've been there a couple of times myself, and it's always quite good.
It's a great design. I brought my nephew there. We walked and ran around the track, and the dogs walked and ran right with us, so that's great.
Happy to hear you say that.
Yeah.
Do the dogs have to be on a leash there?
No.
Nope. So there's two gates. You leash to the first gate, you have to clip them, and then they can go run to the second gate, so.
Good. And they have two, what's the design with the two parks? Is it like, is it, am I thinking too much? Like it's small dogs and big dogs?
You're right, once we have the signage up there.